Thank you.
No problem.
Hundred thousand dollar worth of generators for five thousand dollars is.
Pretty good deal, isn't it?
No brainer.
And with that, Mr. Mayor, I would like to adopt Resolution 2020 dash 21 as read.
Second.
May I have a little complete?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Reddick?
Aye.
Mr. Flaherty?
Aye.
Mr. Reeves?
Aye.
All right, and now under new business, community wellness commitment, Resolution 2020 dash 22.
I don't have a copy of that.
I don't have a copy of that.
Have you not printed out? Okay, let's do it later then if you don't have it. This was a last minute request that we got through the New River Regional Planning District Commission that a couple of the other communities have already passed this resolution regarding wellness. And since you all didn't have another meeting for several weeks, I did ask the park to try to get it prepared for tonight. But we'll bring it back to you when we come back at the end of the meeting.
Okay, and now, Dissection, would you like to give your report, please?
Oh, yes, are you all ready? I have a number of things, and some of them are, I'll start with kind of the announcements. And something that Jordan and I went back and forth on, but we're very pleased to say that our ballpark, County Park, won the best of the ball fields for rookies for 2020. So that's something that we should all be very, very proud of. And it will bring some nice publicity to us and to the town. Last time after meeting, you did have a presentation from the Peak Creek Conservancy. And we have talked with them, we will be establishing a quarterly meeting schedule. And one of the first things that we'll do in that first meeting is to talk about creating a timeline so that we can look at the many projects that were outlined for you all at that last meeting and make sure that we stay on top of them, particularly as it relates to either your capital budget, where we may have to make some contributions, or where there are grant activities. We would like to have, if one of you all as a member of council is interested, we'd like for one of you all to participate in those quarterly meetings. And so as you have an interest, if you would just let me know, we'll make sure that you get wired in. And we can have at least two of you if there's more than one of you who's interested in participating in that process. Something else that we have done recently, after looking at what was happening in the school, in the school system, as well as vacant schools that we have, and our brownfields money, I did approach the county and told them that we'd be happy to use some of our brownfield money to do an assessment of the Claremont School, which is under consideration for housing development. And so we have gone ahead and given the go ahead for our consultants to do that study. There's a deadline for their housing application of October the first, and we'll be able to complete that on their behalf. We also, and you may have read some of this, we've received notification of three grants for the James Hardy Sewer Project. Still not enough money to do the whole project, so we won't commence it until all funds are in hand. But we did get $500,000 from Appalachian Regional Commission, $700,000 from the Department of Housing and Community Development, and one and a quarter million dollars from the EDA. We anticipate that there's still just under $200,000 that's needed. And I have staff working with individuals right now to see if we can't get a grant loan package from the Department of Environmental Quality that would make up that difference. But again, the only money that we'll spend at this point will be for preliminary engineering to get ready for the use of the other monies. It won't go into the construction phase until the town's local match is available. Again, something that I think we may not have been as clear on in the past, but we're going to make sure, with Rebecca's help, that we have money in hand before we start those construction projects. I also wanted to report to you that, and you will understand this site better than I do. It's called the GCC Site, but it's General Chemical Corporation Site. I know it's been discussed with you all previously because we have funds for remediation. There is a long-term plan idea for that area to become a park. But unfortunately, we don't have the money right now for it to be developed for that type of use. But we do have funds through our several brownfields grants to do the actual remediation, put a pad or clear the site. So that'll be done, and we'll put that out for bid in the next several months. But that is progressing.
That was the first relocation.
Yes.
Right, okay. I just made sure I was on the right.
And what I've just learned in the last couple of days is that building that's actually on the site is in the town's ownership as well. So I want to check to see if we've done any brownfields assessment on that, because that might be a nice building for redevelopment. But again, I'm kind of peeling back the onion one layer at a time as we look at these various projects.
I don't believe we had any brownfield on that, because it hasn't been in the town's possession very long.
Okay, well, then we'll certainly see that that gets done, because it's an ideal site, and it's got the town's parking lot right on the other side of it. So parking is not an issue, which it sometimes is when you're doing redevelopment. So I'll take a look at that. One thing that has bothered me, just because I'm commuting and coming in every day on 99, is seeing a building that, in my eyes, has graffiti on it. And I've never worked in a community that didn't have a graffiti ordinance. So I've had one prepared. It's still in draft form, but I would like for you all to have a copy of it this evening with the goal of having it put on your agenda for the 18th of August. I will tell you that I spoke with the gentleman whose building has a graffiti on it. He was very gracious and thanked me for giving him a heads up. Not sure what he will end up doing as it relates to the graffiti on his building, but he's certainly aware of the fact that I am recommending to the council that we come forward with the graffiti ordinance. So I just ask you all to take that with you. And if you have any comments, Spencer's going to be double checking the code sites, but we have looked at the graffiti sections at a number of localities and have come up with what we think is the appropriate language.
I don't know that we've ever gotten to fully appreciate our municipal assignment.
Oh, because of its location, yeah, I understand what you're saying. And last but not least in my comments, because both Rebecca and I and the department has spent a lot of time on this, and I do plan to bring it forward on the 18th for adoption, is a revised budget for the current fiscal year. It has revisions in both the revenues and the expenditures. Council is aware of the fact that your budget did not have a provision for the building inspection function to continue. And so when the decision was made to reinstate those positions that had originally been slated to be eliminated with any kind of agreement with the county, we obviously had to go back and make an adjustment. I've also, I believe, made the council aware of the fact that I've hired a temporary building official who's doing a nice job for us, comes with a lot of certifications. Rebecca and I found a number of things that have not been budgeted sufficiently. We made some significant reductions. In a lot of places, you'll see that in the column on the far right. You'll see where there were funds added or deducted from individual departments. Likewise, on the revenue side, the council did, in its budget process, set aside $438,000 that was to be kept in reserve. And there were specific items that were mentioned on the basis of our meeting last time. I did take the funds out of that category to fund the planner position that's going to be directed toward the economic development kinds of activities. Also, had to obviously make some changes in order to balance the budget. So while you had a number of items recommended totaling $438,195,000, and you'll see that category, that set aside balance is now down to $281,000. But I have, in the process, eliminated the administrative vehicle for $35,000, the replacement of a vehicle for the police department, the recodification of the town code. Seems like there was one more item. Right, and then the community development position that had to be added back, which is the planner. So you still have remaining in that account funds to be looked at in the future for a couple of public works, pieces of equipment, and still several vacant positions that remain vacant at this time. So I've not added back any of those positions with the exception of the planner position. I did remove, for the most part, all training monies and travel monies. I think the situation, both in our community and in our country, is such that people aren't moving around most training right now is being done via Zoom or Google or one of those mechanisms. If there is essential training beyond that that's needed for the police or fire department, they would have to come to the town manager to get permission to fund any of those activities. There are several activities that are what I would call employee-related, general employee kinds of activities. I've made reductions in those. The total reductions on both the revenue and the expenditure side is about $144,000. But I believe it's a budget that we can live with. The departments have been involved and seen the changes. And I would have to say that in the short time that I've been here, everyone has been most cooperative and helpful in trying to wrestle this particular bear to the ground. And I think with your permission and approval at the next meeting, we'll be able to move forward feeling like we have adequate funding to do the jobs that we have. It's not going to be any frills, but we'll get the job done. So if you have questions about any items, once you've had a chance to look at that, please give me or Rebecca a call. But it would be our desire to put that on your agenda for the 18th so that we can move forward.
Is there any way I or anybody else who wants to get this electronic thing?
Sure. You must read better than I do. After three or four pages, I needed to archiver.
It's just easier to read up.
Yeah.
I can play with the Excel file.
You want me to email it, please?
Yeah, it's my kind of email, that'd be great, thank you.
The last thing that I want to mention, and it is somewhat budget-related. You have a personnel policy manual that's severely outdated. But there are two items that are costing money that I believe need to be modified. One is how overtime is calculated. Under your current policy, and these policies are adopted by the council, we don't count sick leave toward time worked in order to be eligible for overtime, but we do count annual leave. In every community that I have worked in, neither is counted toward qualifying for overtime. That doesn't mean the person doesn't get paid, they just get paid straight time for those hours until they reach 40 actual worked hours versus being covered by some type of leave. And so it'd be my recommendation that that policy be changed in the future. The other one is the issue of comp time. And that's a difficult one, because you all, as a council, not necessarily individuals sitting here, but as council, you have evidently gone back and forth at different times as to what that maximum level would be. Problem with comp time is that you earn it in one time period. And if people are allowed to carry over excessive hours, when they finally leave, you're paying at a different rate than what they were earning at the time that they actually earned the comp time. Your policy on comp time also is that comp time is accrued at time and a half as opposed to just straight comp time. And it's done that way so that you can avoid paying the cash out as overtime. I believe that your limit for carryover, which is currently 200 hours, is too high. And that it needs to be raggeded downward for your, what I call your 40-hour-week employees. I think two weeks' worth is more than generous, which would be 80 hours. There may need to be a slightly different calculation for police and fire, given the kind of schedules they work. And I'm willing to look at what those adjustments might be. But again, I'd like to move forward with those policies as soon as is practical, assuming that the council doesn't have any major objection to them. What I would suggest to departments is that they should follow what the Fair Labor Standards Act requires or indicates. And that is that comp time that's used within the same pay period as it's earned is straight time. So what this means is that your managers have got to manage their people and not just say, yes, you can work, you know, an extra two hours this evening, and then take it as comp time. But they ought to be able, within a pay period, unless it's the end of the pay period, they ought to be able to say, okay, if you work two hours on Tuesday, take off next Monday for two hours in order to accommodate whatever the work week is or the work period. There are going to be instances where that's not possible. And then obviously, the employees will accrue at the time and a half comp time rate. But I think we need to be asking the managers to manage more and not allow the employees to manage us.
I guess my question is, to me, it seems like that comp time remotes is stupid. Thought is a added step, an unnecessary step to where, could we not just ask it to be paid out at the time that it was spent? And actually, if they worked over, then they should be paid to work over. And if the manager is responsible for a budget, then they would be responsible for trimming that additional pay somewhere else, as opposed to calling it comp time and letting them work 38 hours, having them actually work 38 hours if they worked over the previous week and let them have that additional time off. They're still getting paid overtime for the additional hours that they worked on a previous week. So it's still technically, you know, additional pay for working longer in that particular week than what it would be if someone worked 40 hours and then worked 40 hours. But I guess I don't necessarily understand the purposes of having somebody work 42 hours one week and saying, let's call it comp time, instead of just calling it overtime.
Well, the difference is the pay and the payout. And we don't really budget very much for overtime pay. And because of that, I think the departments have been encouraged to, and with the fact that they've been able to carry as many as 200 hours, they've allowed employees to earn comp time and not have to take it off. What your policy says is that the department head can manage the comp time and can actually say to an employee, you need to take some of this time off. You know, you're getting too large in accrual. That's not seemingly been happening. And so what I'm trying to do is make recommendations that encourage, if not enforce, the fact that people manage within those budgets. I think to make, to suddenly say just pay them overtime is going to make it, how do I say this nicely? It's going to make it easy for someone to say, okay, go ahead and I'll pay you. But then who's going to find the money to pay? Because there are certain fixed expenses in a budget unless you have, let's say, turnover, you know, people leaving, and so you may save some salary money for a while. It's going to be very difficult to pay overtime on a regular basis. And there are a lot of positions that are accruing significant amounts of comp time at the time and a half basis, whereas if they manage within the pay period, it's just going to be straight time. And the person will still, in the case of a 40-hour week, in the two-week pay period, they'll still just work 80 hours. But some of them may be time off because they had, they earned four hours the previous week, and then they would take four hours off the next week.
That sounds like good management.
Well, with putting more responsibility on the managers to manage the time, and then by reducing that carryover, and of course, anybody that's got those numbers now, if somebody's capped at 200, we're not going to take the 200 hours away from them. But what I am going to say to department heads is that you need to start managing those employees in a way that that number starts coming down. You know, maybe it's two hours here and three hours there, it's, you know, but they need to manage it. It shouldn't be that the employees are telling us when they want to take off. It shouldn't be at the convenience of the organization.
I would certainly agree with that effort. I know when we had the discussion some time ago, it ended up revolving a lot, and understandably so, around our first responders and police and fire because of the way they work. So just understanding, having a full understanding of what we need to do there to ensure that, you know, they too get a fair shake. I certainly would support the reduction where it's needed.
Well, I haven't zeroed in on the police and fire carryforward yet. I am thinking two weeks is more than sufficient for what I call the 40-hour-week people to carry, that they could be paid for at the end if they were not able to take it off. But I want to look at both the police and fire schedules, because they're different in different communities, and they do have a straight time component to each one of them before they actually get into overtime. And so I want to work on that, but didn't want to spend a lot of time on it if the council was not supportive of moving in that direction.
I had thought we had discussed one time that it had to be down by the end of the year. Did we, and you're saying it's 200 hours is what? I thought we kicked that can down the road before, that it's up to the department heads, that they had one year or that year, year to year to get that down, or it's just?
Well, at the.
I know, I know.
At the time we had that discussion, if you remember, the comp time was, you know, out of this world. It was extremely high, and we worked for, what, 18 months, as I recall? Because I don't even, I mean, people had unlimited comp time at this point. And it was, it was quite a financial burden.
And it's a liability in your audit.
Exactly. And so that's the reason we pushed for that reduction. And I think apparently 200, and I don't recall, 200 hour was where we landed. And if we need to fine tune that, I'm certainly 100% agreeable from my perspective.
I mean, the question I've gotten asked before is in regards to a salary position. And people's minds, that's, you're paid for, you know, salary is a base pay for a job. And so they ask, how does a salary position get comp time, you know, for working over to fulfill a job?
The difference is whether or not the position is considered exempt or non-exempt. If you're considered an exempt employee, which is generally management, there is no such thing as comp time. But what normally happens, and this has been my practice as well, if I have a department head who I know worked two hours over earlier this week and then came in today because I needed him for something, and then they need to go to the dentist or the doctor next week, I don't ask them to put in a leave form for that hour and a half, because they've given me more than the 40 hours. But it's not a strict accounting. On the other hand, I've had people work for me who are exempt and who are paid well, who are clock watchers, you know, and they're in right at 8:30 and they're out at 5:00. And when that person wants to take off to go see the dentist, I tell them to put in a leave form. Because, you know, I'm only getting the 40 hours. But people who are exempt, and the federal government has just recently raised the threshold, dollar threshold, for what constitutes exempt, both on a salary basis and then the kind of work that they perform. If you have what's called a working supervisor, somebody who's doing the work and at the same time supervising, they're generally considered non-exempt. And those are the people that would be eligible for overtime or comp time. So just because you get a salary doesn't necessarily mean you're eligible or ineligible for comp time. It really is the amount of the salary and the kind of duties that you have.
So we have some salary positions that are going to make that threshold.
Yes, sir. I know I'm throwing a lot at you, but I'm trying very hard to put some things in place that I think will help you have better managed departments and better use of the funds that you do have. And they're not always popular, and I know that, but that's something I'm here for.
And this is just kind of a random, a curious question more than anything. As far as revenues go, do you have a feel? You know, there was a big concern when we originally had this budget. We didn't know what COVID-19, how it was going to impact our revenues. Do you have a feel for how we're tracking that?
Well, the way Rebecca went through her review of our current revenues was to go back and kind of look at trends. I think you actually went back, how many years, five? I did three, four, and five year trends. So we tried to look at those as well as what had been budgeted. And then, as you can see, we reduced the revenues by $144,000. What's still kind of outstanding is trying to sort out the grant issue that has been a real challenge for your budget generally. And as soon as that's sorted out, we'll know what a carryforward would be. And I hope to have that resolution for you on the 18th as well. But I know when we looked at meals tax, it was doing fairly well. It's doing well. I mean, it's maybe not 100%, but of course, you know, you have one or two restaurants that were closed. And they've, I think they're open again, sometimes they look like they're still closed, but their revenue should start. Your lodging tax is down right now as compared to this particular time period, you know, a year ago. But we've tried to go ahead and make some adjustments on revenue with what we know now. And we may have to do some more of that later, but.
So you reduced another, just to make sure I understand, you reduced the revenues in this budget by another 144,000 in addition.
Yes, sir. And then reduce that same amount on the expenditures. And that's all I have.
May I have a motion to enter into closed session for the following items? Two items under Virginia Code 2.2-dash-3711A11, discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body. An evaluation of performance of departments or schools of public institutions of higher education where such evaluation will necessarily involve discussion of the performance of specific individual concerning appointments concerning, appointments concerning performance of the interim town manager, appointments to boards and commissions. And then two items under Virginia Code 2.2-dash-3711-A3 for consideration of the acquisition of real property for public purpose or the disposition of publicly held real property where discussion is an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negative negotiation strategy of the public body. And two items under Virginia Code 2.2-dash-3711-A8, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by the public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such. regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel regarding a zoning violation or a boundary adjustment. And one item dealing with the current COVID-19 pandemic.
Seven seconds.
May I have a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Ken?
Yes.
Thompson?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Mr. Ragland?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.